Are you good, Hazel? Okay. All right. Let's call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion for Treasurer Rice to chair the meeting.
Second. All right. Motion and second. Is there anybody that, any discussion? None? Okay. All right. So those who would like me to chair the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. With that being done, roll call, please, Clerk Cody.
Clerk Cody here, Treasurer Rice.
Here.
Trustee Bills.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Houck.
Here.
Trustee Thering.
Here.
And Supervisor Milkie is excused.
All right. And with that, there's no presentations or public hearings, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, yeah. That, that would be good, too. Sorry. Motion and support to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Thank you, Clerk Cody. All right. After the approval of the agenda, we will move on to public comment. With that, those are joining us via Zoom. We will take the people here, which is nobody. First, those that are on Zoom, you can click on the raise your hand icon near the bottom right corner of your screen. If you are joining us via telephone, you can hit star nine. And that, if you would like to speak. This is limited to three minutes regarding items on this agenda only. Is there anybody who would like to speak?
There's nobody on Zoom.
All right. Nobody in person and nobody on Zoom. We will close public comment at 7:02. Sorry, I should have opened it at 7:02 first. All right. With that, we will move on to report boards and comments. All right. Current list of boards and commissions. I don't think we have any right now that need looked at, so we will move on to board member reports.
Yes, Monday, I'm sorry?
Oh, I said, Trustee Brown.
Monday, October 10th, City Council meeting, Malpleton City Council meeting, very short, 35-minute meeting. For me is Brian Chapman was newly appointed commissioner. So he was sworn in, so they did fill the seat. And a couple other things, they're going to be considering revised off-premise, on-premise liquor license policy. So there's going to be some, some things happening there for the, kind of the new facilities coming in, the new age facilities, and so they're, they're looking at their license policy. Other than that, that was about it. It was, it was a pretty quick meeting. They did have, go into a work session after that, and so that's my, that's it.
All right. Any questions? All right. Bills?
Okay. On October 4th, I attended the Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting. In particular, there was a presentation by Community Mental Health Director and Assistant Director, and they gave a presentation, discussed all of their activities and benefits that they have in this community, including, and I don't know if you guys know this, I'll just note it, that they had, that they serve the inmates in the jail 40 hours a week, which is great. And then they also have an intervention specialist at schools along with the Wayne State Partnership to re, they also have a partnership with Wayne State University reviewing crisis response cases to improve that. Also, the MSU extension also gave a little bit of a presentation and, and they, they said what they do, and they have a full-time 4-H rep plus a full-time administrat, administrative assistant, nutrition, soil, use, and agriculture in Isabella County. And then Isabella Conservation District will be at the Isabella County Fairgrounds on October 22nd for hazardous waste pickup, and you can look at their Facebook page for details on what you can and cannot bring to that. That's all I've got.
Thank you. And moving on to, Trustee Thering?
Nothing to report at this time. I, I'll be next week, so.
All right.
Probably next time.
All right. Just a reminder with the online stuff, make sure you guys are speaking into the microphone. And then going on over then to Trustee Houck.
I haven't had any meetings, I'm going to watch tomorrow morning for the role of commissioners.
All right. Clerk Cody?
We had our election commission meeting yesterday on the 11th to approve the election inspector list, and we held the public accuracy testing for the tabulators and election equipment.
Perfect. Any other questions?
Everything go well for you, Lisa, in that?
Yes, it did.
Perfect.
Trustee Houck and I were also there as representatives of the commission.
Nice. Thank you.
It's interesting, isn't it?
Oh, it's something.
Do we have enough help, do you know?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. And I did not have any meetings, so moving on. The memo from Treasurer Rice, do you need me to go through that, Mark, or?
No.
Okay.
No. Acknowledged, it's in your packet.
Yep.
College having questions, you may want to.
Okay. All right. So memo in the packet. If anybody has any questions about it, let me know. But...
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah. All right. Moving on then, do we have an approval of the agenda, the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support, oh, I'm sorry, Brown can add it.
All right. Motion, Houck, support Brown or Bills?
Brown.
Brown? All right. To approve the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Who had warrants there?
I did.
Yep. All good? All right. Moving right along. Any other questions? All right. All right. So there was a motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. That moves us to new business. Policy Governance 2.10, Communication and Support of the Board. Mark, did you want to?
Yes, thank you. Normally, the policy governance reports are at our second meeting of the month. 2.10, I failed to get that in last month. That's why it's in the first meeting this month. The title of the policy is Communication and Support to the Board. I'm not going to read the whole policy because it's rather long, but it, it, at its highest level, it says that the township manager shall not permit the board to be uninformed or unsupported in its work. And then there's nine or 10 sub-policies below that. And in the main, it's, it's talking about making sure that you, the board members, have what you need to do your jobs, make informed decisions. I'll let you read the entirety of the policy at your leisure. My interpretation of this policy is that the manager will make the board aware of any material information that would impact policymaking, the policymaking role of the board, and that the manager will gather relevant information, presented it, you know, present it to the board in a way that is understandable, it's concise, it's not filled with a lot of technical jargon. And that is part of that exercise, that the manager will submit the monitoring reports according to the schedule that's in your policy, and that it includes data that through feedback and dialogue that the board has found to be relevant, and that the manager also has a responsibility to advise the board if, in the manager's opinion, the board is not in compliance with its own governing process. And so that's how I interpret this policy. I think it's a reasonable interpretation based on the wording of the policy itself. There are several data points that are included in the report. The monitoring reports are presented timely per the schedule, and when one is inadvertently missed, like it was last month, I come right away. I didn't want to wait till the second meeting of the month to catch up. That the manager's activity reports will be submitted timely. Got some feedback on that in our last couple of meetings to make those a little bit more timely, and that I come up with a bit more, a different format, if you will, so that the, the items of particular significance would be maybe at the top or somehow more readily apparent as opposed to being buried in, in some of the, in some of the detail. And that I do feel that, that I, as the manager, whether it's by email or personal conversations, that all the boards kept up to date on, you know, high-profile manners, you know? If there's a water main shut down in a significant part of town, or it's infect, affecting a large number of customers, you'll hear from me. You don't, you, you, you don't end up waiting to hear from me till the next day, but I get that word out as, as quick as it comes to me. And that, one of the things we put into place, once I got here, were these, what we call Request for Board Action Memos that kind of cover the action item that you're going to be dealing with in the agenda, and the intent of those is to give you sufficient background information so you can make intelligent decisions. So based on that, we feel, I feel that we're in compliance with this policy 2.10. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No. No more questions.
All right. Oh, what was that?
I said, "Thank you."
Okay. Yep. All right. Moving on. Next one, 2023 Township Manager Contract Renewal Agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to consider the approval of the Township Manager's Employment Agreement for calendar year 2023.
Okay. Motion?
Support.
Motion, Bills, support Brown.
Did you have a chance to review that? I know you weren't here last time.
Yes, I did. Yeah. I, I'm good. Okay. So. Any other discussion or?
I think we decided on this last time. We just wanted to make sure you were good with it and everything.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Awesome.
Yep.
Think we can do a roll call on that then, or?
It needs roll call.
Yes.
But just one second.
Yes, I looked it over, and I'm, I'm, I'm great with it, so.
I think it's extremely reasonable.
Yes.
And the motion, can you take away the consider?
Yeah.
Of your motion, just to approve it?
Okay.
Should it have what the changes made or?
No.
As presented or something?
So just approval of the Township Manager's Employment Agreement for calendar year 2023.
All the changes are made in the document and then?
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
I just didn't know if you wanted to say it.
And you're still okay with?
I support.
Supporting it? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Roll call, please, Clerk Cody.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
All yeses.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that? Is there, I know I talked to James earlier today. Is there a reason we couldn't do a two- or three-year contract? I mean...
No.
I, that's never been brought up, and I brought it up to James today, you know, the...
I don't know if the board would be interested in, but if the board was ever interested in, is that something you would entertain?
Yeah.
A conversation?
Yeah. I mean, at the appropriate time.
Certainly. I, there, there's nothing from a legal perspective that would prevent that.
That's what, we were wondering if, you know?
I think traditionally, they're, they're annual, just because it's like a...
Things change any?
At-will type of position and, but...
But I just think it'd make you feel secure, you know? If you knew you had a three-year contract and...
We might want to look at the policy, in our board policies, because I think it says we have to do it annually in there.
We, I mean, we could fulfill all the obligations. We could go, you know, absolutely do everything, and when we got to that particular one portion, you know, ask for discussion, and if there was discussion, then we carry on. If there's not, then we move forward. I just, it just, I thought it was a nice thought, and I, I mean, we've got a lot of time to process our thoughts and discuss in meetings at the appropriate time, another time.
You know, and you could do something where, say, year one, it's a 3% increase, year two, 4%, year five, or three, 5%. You know, I mean, it's, it'd be something you'd have to work out, but I just, I don't know.
It's a good thought.
He was traveling back from Mackinac Island, and I was coming back from Lelandon, and I just, you know, called him up, and I said, "Hey, I'm looking at some nice colors. How about you?" Then I just said, "Well, you know, we're talking about this tonight," and I said, "Why, I wonder why we've never done a two- or three-year contract?"
It's always been great to bring new ideas. I don't know, those are great ideas, guys.
But we can fulfill the...
It only comes natural when you meet.
And we can edit that. We have the power to edit our own policies, so...
The most important thing is to make sure managers feel dry or if we as a board are interested in that level, he would be interested in that level.
Yeah.
That's the most important part of the conversation.
And I think that would be the most important part for me, is making sure, okay, if we even looked at this, is that something he would even consider? And we would want to make sure that we do like, you know, what you said and say, first year, it's this, second year, looking at this, third year, this. That way, it's fair to him, too. But it's a good thought.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the ARPA funds use discussion.
So I'll just kind of kick this off a little bit. The board has been wanting to have a discussion on the use of the ARPA funds. Remind the board that Union Township was, I'll say, awarded $1.4 million, rounded. The rules on how that was to be spent have changed over time. When the, when it was first brought out, the rules were pretty specific and, and I would argue onerous for many of the communities across the country. And then they had a public comment period on the rules, and they, they, they changed it a bit. The biggest change was creating what I call kind of a safe harbor rule, that if you're awarded under $10 million, then you, you basically, and there's some finer points, but we don't need to get into all that, but basically, you can use the money however it's legally allowed to be used in your township, state. And those rules are different across the country, but there are certain things that townships can and cannot spend money on per state law. Those kind of rules are still all in place, but everything that you're used to seeing money spent on is an allowable expense. And that's where, in the last week, or maybe at the last meeting, there was, I think the supervisor was trying to articulate that, that this, the money that's in the general fund, fund balance, can be spent however we're used to using it. This money effectively can be used the same way. It can also be used on the water and sewer infrastructure. Technically, it can even be used to pay people's salaries. So there, there's a lot of, the, the point of that is there's a lot of discretion at the board level about how you want to spend this money. The, there have been two commitments made by the board to date. One is about $190,000 for the outdoor fitness equipment at McDonald Park, and then about $250,000 for the road work. The ex, the, the project that was approved a couple of weeks ago on Broomfield, east of the existing project. So there was a commitment made to use $250,000 there. That's about $440,000, or a million four. There are 2% applications in for both those projects I just referenced. So to the extent we were awarded any of that 2% money, these commitments respectively of 190 and 250 would go down because we'd use 2% money. 2% decisions are traditionally made within the first 15 days of November. So sometime in the first half of the month, we'll know the results of those applications. So with that being said, it's, it's more for the board, I think with the chair leading the discussion, to talk about how you might want to spend the other million dollars.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mark. Yes, go ahead. Trustee Bills?
I just, if you were ready, I was going to say, do you have anything else in the hopper that you were thinking about for ARPA before we get started?
There's been a budget request made. So the way the budget process works, departments make requests of the manager. Manager reviews that, turns that into a recommendation that at some point is presented to the board. In the request phase, there was ARPA money identified for a couple fairly important, I think, one water and one sewer project, both underground, infrastructure. You may recall from the meeting where Jennifer from Gordy Fraser was here, that meeting was about getting you all set up for the idea that there's a fair amount of capital coming up and that we were going to be borrowing, needing to borrow money to pay for that, which is okay. So, and when you borrow the money, and in, in any event, however you find the resources, whether it's cash financed or you're borrowing, the ratepayers are paying it, one way or the other. And they're also going to pay the interest on the debt when you borrow it. So by using ARPA funds, you can envision that that would be improvements to the system that would not need to be paid by the ratepayer instead of being paid by the public government.
Anything else?
No.
Would, would that include not just the current ratepayer? Would that be like an expansion? Or is that just based on what we already have structured and around?
You could use the ARPA money for existing equipment replacement. You could use it for expansion if you wanted to run a water line out, M20. I think there's a sewer line, but not a water line. Maybe it's the other way around, but...
I've got water.
So that would be considered an expansion of the system.
I meant the request, the, at the, at the stage that you're looking at, that request, is that something that includes? I meant the request, the, at the, at the stage that you're looking at, that request, is that something that includes existing or existing and expansion?
Both, because the, the sizing of the system is, is driven by primarily a lot of minutia involved, but primarily to satisfy the needs of the, of the community today. And the system needs to be sized to fit the, the projected needs of the community in the future. And there's a process where that's kind of determined. Also, by design, a water and sewer system is built to accommodate, some I'll call it, natural growth.
And how much are the dollar figures on those two requests, if you don't mind?
One, I want to say one is 700 and some thousand dollars. And I don't recall really what the second one amount is. What I do recall though, is those two requests plus the current commitments, the two that I mentioned earlier, were slightly above the available funds. So we're, so those two requests plus these two were taking us above, slightly above 1.4 million.
Well, based on that report that we had last time, it seems more prudent to borrow the money, in my opinion, for infrastructure, since we have a potential to get up to 49% grant back. What do you guys think?
I agree.
And I wanted to, I'm sorry, you had your hand up. I'm not the chair of this discussion.
I'd like to see a park. I know we've talked about that on the south side. I just think that it'd be a good use of some of those funds to get that started. One thing I forgot to say on my, you know, I should have maybe reported, board member reports. I don't know if anybody's been on Mission Road, on South Mission, over the overpass. From the overpass to Millbrook Road, that all got redone. And the shoulders now go up to the bike path. It looks really good. I mean, they just have to stripe it, but, you know, now they're moving north. So they're on the north end of Mission Road. But I went up there today and I can't believe how good that road looks. I mean, it's, I haven't seen it look that good in my lifetime and
Wow.
You know, I mean, I, I was impressed how the shoulders are all paved and everything. It really looks good. Wish I would have taken a picture. And then Carriage Lane got done too.
Awesome.
I will comment for whatever it's worth that this is one-time funding. And I would suggest that you be at least conscious of the degree of, of what you decide to spend the money on and how that either increases or doesn't impact operating expenses. You can spend money on things where it's basically a one-time expense. You know, you spend it, you're done. It hasn't added recurring operational expenses. And we have been drawing down our fund balance over the last few years, which is by design. We do have some fund balance that can carry some operating expenses for a bit of time. But generally speaking, from a, I'll just say, traditional, public sector, finance perspective, you, you often try to direct one-time resource infusions to one-time expenses versus something that, once the money's gone, it's gone. You can take a million dollars and add, you know, three positions to the organization for a number of years, but soon as that's gone, then what do you do? That's just the, that illustrates that.
Right.
No, that's a very good point.
It's a very good point.
Excellent point.
But I would say, uh, just a small park on the south side of town. What are we talking about for upkeep, you know? It's not going to be ball fields and things like that, you know? We're talking about a trailhead end with a parking lot, right? I mean, maybe some, little, a small pavilion. And isn't, is that included in our Parks Master Plan that's being made? You're in planning, you're in.
We've had some, well, we haven't really had any discussion about the actual park because I think the, as a, being on the planning commission, we're looking for a little direction.
What I do know is a park on the, I don't recall the exact wording, but it might be specific to the south side. Or it might be more general to, there, there's a question that has to do with what, what, what do you think about adding parks to the
Ground system.
To the park system.
Right.
There's two, and there's a question that talks about adding a, a third park. It may say on the south side, it may just be more general, but that's just a survey question.
And I think, you know, Bill was right to single out that area because that's an underserved area of the township. And a lot of times, people can't really get from that section of town to this section of town without a lot of difficulty if they don't have a vehicle or something like that. So, you know, and I know there's a lot of kids in that neighborhood.
Well, and it's 14 acres, it's kind of, kind of a land-lagged piece. I mean, there is a little bit of frontage on both Deerfield and Mission, but I, why do we have that land? Why do we have that property? I mean,
I don't know what all goes on in there. I think.
I don't know if anybody, if a business.
There's some utility infrastructure in there, maybe a pump station. I don't know.
I think there is right there.
Yeah, there is, right up front, right up front.
Yeah, but I just wonder, you know, I mean, it's 14 acres, I think, I think it's 14.2 acres, but I, I just, you know, it's sitting there doing nothing.
Is it wet? Is it wet down in there, Bill?
Just a, a little bit.
It's a little wet.
In the back, it's high in the back. It's pines back there. It's nice looking.
You'd have to push some, some soil around.
Right.
For sure, because now how much, I don't know.
I wouldn't even know how much something, you know, even if you're just talking a pavilion with a, hooking onto the bike trail there and making a trailhead, what's something like that even cost to do?
Right.
To prep the land, the permits and everything. I, 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 I would, I would bet to wage, you, you, you're talking a pretty good sum of, of money to just do that.
I would think.
Especially if you got to go through the DEQ for wetland.
I don't know if it's wetland.
I don't think it's that bad.
I, I don't know anything about the property.
I don't think beer uses.
I think the way, I think traditionally the board's kind of worked is if the policy perspective is more parks or more recreational opportunities on the south side of the township, that may be all you need to say because there, there's a, there's a lot of competing interests for what little land we already have. But if, if the policy objective is a park on the south side, it could be there, it could be somewhere else and still meet the.
Oh, cool.
We have two now, we'd have three, you know, where it goes exactly, you know? And, and it, and I say that because I, I, I have no idea what, what goes on, on that property right now.
It's being used as recreational property, I would say.
Yeah, right.
We took a little walk. Yeah, we, we see what's going on.
Oh, really? Okay. Oh, I see.
So, but anyways, that, that being said, I, 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 I think when this came up on the agenda, I knew this topic was going to come up at this park. We've all talked about this. I think it's all sparked interest somewhat in every trustee, I believe, that, that I've talked to. I, I just, I, I would hate to, I, I would, I would hate to add. I, I'm just weighing both, you know, as far as add an extra cost, how much is it going to be, what's it going to cost to, to support the structure after it's up to, you know?
Right.
You know, that, that's just such a great point that I hadn't even thought about. I just thought, oh, that park, yeah, everybody uses it. Yeah, well, now we gotta take care of it, so.
Well, perhaps we could use ARPA funds to do a feasibility study for a third park. And just have an engineer look at that or something.
You know, maybe it could be something that you do, you do a little bit now and see how it goes. Like, for example, a place for someone to park.
Park.
To hit, use the trailhead. I don't know if that's the right way to look at it, but.
I know that when I, I don't know when we mentioned it, Sheriff Maine, but were you there?
So what?
When I spoke to Sheriff Maine about this potential park down there, did, was anybody else? Okay, well, it probably might, might have been when I saw him at a BOC meeting, but anyway. Um, he was really concerned about potential criminal activity at any south side park. And he said, make sure you do have 360-degree cameras on your lights there because that'll help him a lot. But other, you know, it just seemed like they were concerned about that, about activities in an empty park at night, you know, down there, so. I don't know. That's the only thing I had to say about that, but.
That's amazing. That's everywhere.
Yeah, it's everywhere. Oh, it's everywhere.
I was at the co-t township meeting the other night. There was an incident at one of their roadside parks and that's what they were talking about, getting cameras with some ARPA funds. I mean, there was a gun incident out there.
Holy cow.
This is the type of conversation I, I'm enjoying having because our managers kind of presented something that maybe we didn't think of. And now we can put this on a list along with maybe talking about the park. And I'm sure there's a handful of other things that I think we would all like to just see if it sticks to the wall and have, have the right conversations and make sure it fits correctly.
There are, speaking of parks, and I may get this wrong, but there's been two properties, two residential lots acquired in the last couple of years. One on, let's say, Yatz Drive. And the other maybe on Jonathan Lane.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Uh, where we've removed the structure and, and the, the intent of those is basically a neighborhood, what a lot of people refer to as pocket parks. There might be a sign on it, not necessarily, you know, there might be a picnic table, but it's just the size of a normal lot, but it'll be a place, you know, for the immediate neighborhood to maybe go. It might be a grill or something on there. And so we've added that to the, I'll call it the system. Because at the end of the day, somebody's got to cut that grass.
Right.
And they got to shovel that snow off the sidewalk. And, and we are, if you were to ask Department Director Smith, you know, our, our grass, McDonald, all the facilities, Jamison, that's primarily cut by summer temporary people. And, you know, I'm, I'm pretty certain that if, that if we, which, which is fine, these are just policy decisions, but I don't think you can keep adding lawn maintenance without eventually getting some more full-time employees that are doing something in the wintertime and then they're also, you know, cutting some grass. And it continues to be difficult to get summer help.
Did you say these parks, you, you, you have these in a plan or you're, they're set up already on these lots?
No, they're not set up, but that's kind of.
That's where you're, that you're headed?
We removed a foundation on one of them, right?
Yeah, foundation ought to be gone by now.
Yep, and so.
And it probably ought to be reseeded by now.
Grass is there.
And I think we're going to put a sidewalk in to get from one neighborhood to the other, I'll call it. Don't know if there'll be a fence around it or not, but the point is, it's not on the south side, we're ranch that. But we are trying to bring some open green space into a couple neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Great idea.
And I think that one, that's already, the sidewalk money was allocated?
Yeah.
Yeah, so really just have to add a couple of park benches and a couple picnic table and a grill. There's something like that, so.
Here, Cody.
I like trustee Bill's idea of the study because at least we can know where we can go from there to see what we can do with that part of the land or what kind of parks even possible. Maybe finish the sidewalk that wraps around. I don't know if that's already in the projects, but just wraps around the township hall to that part.
Right. So, um, something that's not supported by user fees is our renewable projects. We were, we were doing a feasibility study this year, is that right? On renewables?
On energy?
Yes.
We have not gone very far on that.
Okay. And that's something we were all kind of, well, I mean, at least I know Bill and I are definitely interested in getting. Isabella County just signed a, a contract for retrofitting all of their fluorescent lights in the county building and maybe all their buildings, but it was less than a hundred thousand dollars. And it's got an ROI of two years. You know, and that's going to LED, no more ballast to replace. And that's just a retrofit, no, no new equipment, just the bulbs and the, and they re- replace the bulbs and take out the ballast and, you know? I mean, I don't know exactly what's into it, but I talked to the gentleman that, that handled, handled the contract and he said it's a no-brainer. And I mean, I've even had a friend that has a business that retrofitted all her lights and is just elated. I would love to see that done.
At the cleanup day, just related to that, there was a citizen that came in with two boxfuls of light bulbs that all worked. Non-LED, whatever those are called.
I saw that guy.
But they swapped out everything in their house with the LED and so they had, you know, two boxfuls of, of working light bulbs.
Yeah. And they're cheap, they're, you know, but they, they cost a lot to run, those, those fluorescent light bulbs.
Well, I know we just did it at Sacred Heart, everything, remember? You were there the other night with me. I mean, everything, the whole school, the church, the parish hall and.
Yeah. Are you suggesting that's something we do with the ARPA?
I would love to. I think it's a good idea.
It's a great idea.
You know, throughout all of our facilities, get rid of all the fluorescent overheads and make them LED.
Are we doing a study on the building? Or we're supposed to hire somebody to do a study on the building?
We started putting together an RFP for a consultant to look at that. It is not completed yet and it's not out on the street yet.
Can you use the ARPA funds towards that? Just take the money from that instead?
Yeah, and, and that's, that kind of gets back to my earlier comment. The ARPA funds have to be committed. The ARPA funds have to be committed by the end of twenty twenty-three and spent by twenty twenty-four. And so that may feel like that's a constraint. But since
I thought it was twenty twenty-six.
cash is fungible, I think I have that right. You can, you can spend money today that you have, and you can report it out as ARPA funds. And then you've met the expenditure timelines, whatever they are.
Right.
And still have a million four in the bank, more than you had before. Which effectively gives you more time to spend the money if you follow.
Yeah.
It's nothing, it's not pushing the envelope, it's not a shell game, it's just the fact that cash is fungible.
Trustee Houck.
Mark, could you make a list of maybe, I don't know, three, five, eight things, send it to us? And we could rate them one to five, and then we could, you know, like if,
Yeah, sure.
Just say feasibility or sustainability of lights. If that, everybody put a five down, well, by gosh, there's your number one project. You know, if it's two hundred thousand dollars of those funds to go towards retrofitting all new lights, then could you do something like that and send it out to us? That might save a lot of conversation.
Yeah. I've, I've also been taking notes of like the topics that came up.
And somewhat related, similar is, I spoke with Roger Houck the other day. And he asked me to give him a list of, like a wish list. Because the state has a ton of money. That there's so much money that it's gonna be hard to spend it. And that's, can be kind of nerve-wracking, particularly for, you know. Causes a lot of opportunity for not spending it the way it's supposed to be spent. There is so much money out there that, what I hear from communities a lot is that they don't have the personnel, the staff, they can't get the workers out on, in the street to even spend the money. We give you a gift of ten million dollars today, and it'd take us a decade to spend all that with our current staffing levels. And then trying to get contractors or, you know, to build a road, it just, with fewer workers and that, the whole business, you know, it, I guess it's a nice problem to have, but.
Well, I can tell you that Isabella County bid that out, that project, and two, two of the bids came out and doubled the bid that they actually selected. So, we wanna get that guy.
Well, somebody's gonna have to pay for this in the future.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
It's not all free. I mean, that's what everybody thinks, it's all free, but it's not all free.
But I only say that
Right.
because there are limits from an administrative perspective, from a human capital perspective, to be able to spend all the money.
Right.
I know one of the ideas that, you know, I had, I had talked to Trustee Milky about had to do with the, the bridge out on Broadway. And doing a walk, a walkable bridge that's built on the side of, kind of like what we have out here in front of the park.
Addition, yeah.
Lisa talked about that years ago.
And, you know, just trying to see, okay, what, you know, working with the other entities. Because, I mean, that's, that's a big price tag. You know, the, I, I was gonna ask Brian tonight, but he's not here, having to do with the casino. They were interested in it as well.
I think we talked about that, but it wouldn't be a good use of the ARPA fund. Because it would take so long to get all the meetings and all the, everything together. It wouldn't be done in time to come up with it.
Right.
I mean, we, we can't decide that. I think M dot has to decide that.
Yeah, and I was just gonna see what the.
Too big, kind of right now for ARPA, is what they were kind of saying.
And that was what I was gonna find out, is if that's even remotely possible, working with other entities to try to.
Future project, though.
Yeah. To try to get something big like that done with other entities.
I agree. That would be a great project.
That is a great project. I did have one other thought, um, the water sewer department. Their staffing, I mean, they're short-staffed. I mean, maybe one or two other full-time workers. I don't know if they ever mentioned it, but they're really stretched out to the max.
Yeah. Did they lose people or something?
No, it's just there's so much work and they only have so many people.
And it's hard to find help for some of these things, so.
Maybe a full-time staff. I don't know if that's, just throwing it out there.
Pam Manager, can you respond to that? Are we short-staffed on the, on the, on that end of the spectrum?
On the utility side?
Yeah. I mean, would, I mean, are you thinking of hiring someone?
No.
Is that in, no?
What I am thinking of, though, is allowing a proposal to be submitted, but what I've asked for is a proposal to be submitted to deal with a couple of things. One, we have a bit of an older workforce. And so I'm concerned about transition and succession planning. And, you know, we prefer not to just get a few weeks' notice, somebody's gone, that type of thing. And so, just to replace existing staff, I could see where we may have two people in one position for a period of time to help with that transition. Because some of these positions aren't as easy just to come in blind on. You have to have certifications, you know, water operators, wastewater operators, all licensed, and they have to have certain licenses. So there's that from a personnel perspective. And within that, there will also be some discussion, and for instance, a good one is when Kim Smith, Kim Smith used to be had a particular job when I started here, I forget what it was. It was a bargaining unit job. There was no, what I called a department director position over those, that area. Somebody that wasn't part of the bargaining unit, that was more at-will, and that, I, somebody that I could hold clearly accountable. And so I created, with the board's approval, the department director position for the new Department of Public Services. And that department, I said it was gonna handle the utilities, water and sewer, fleet, the entire organization. Roads, primary interface between the road commission and the township. And, and facilities, facility management. So that department was created, those functional work areas were put into that department. And then I asked Kim if she had any interest in leading that department, coming out of the bargaining unit. And there was risk involved that for her and all that stuff. And she accepted it. And her position remains, her old position remained vacant. So we created a new one at a department-level position, but what she used to do has never been filled. So to me, that's a position that is, has been allocated, is part of the allocation of positions. But it, but it hasn't been filled or budgeted for in six years. And what I've been suggesting to Kim is that she needs to look at that current unfilled allocated position and figure out, because she does need some help, figure out what you want this position to do and fill it. So, at that point, we're getting into this nuance of a list of allocated positions that have been approved by the board over time versus positions that are budgeted for year in, year out. And those two don't necessarily always line up. You know, when you eliminate a position, you do more than just stop budgeting for it. You eliminate the allocation. And so then, if you want to, because when a department head wants to add staff, there's two things they normally have to do. They have to get approval for the allocation, which is a tough nut to crack often. And then you have to get it budgeted. And so by doing it the way we've done it, we've kept the allocation, so we really don't need to approve that, so to speak, because it's still on the books.
Yeah.
It would just be then a budgeting exercise, more of a budgeting, whether the board wanted to pay to have it filled now. It's a long answer to the, they, and with the addition of the responsibilities within that department, when I created the Public Services Department, because it used to just concern itself mostly with water and sewer. The, there were things thrown over there, but there was, there was authority but no accountability. And I didn't like, that's not a good setup, so. If you want the authority, you're gonna have the accountability too. And that was what Kim had to decide in her own mind over a period of time, whether or not she wanted to assume that. Because if she did, she was gonna become more of an at-will employee than a bargaining unit employee. They, so to, to do the pure utility things were probably okay. But as the organization has grown and become more complex, and we're talking about service delivery and different types of service delivery, more and more things have been going over to that department. In the old days, for instance, this position just happens to be located there. But we have a, we have a G I S position in the organization. It's, I would, I would classify it as a permanent part-time position. Thirty hours a week, no benefits. I think they're paid, I don't know what they're paid, but not very much. But that's worked for that person, and of course, it works for the township. Well, they used to spend their time exclusively on the water and sewer infrastructure, keeping track of what's underground, all the pumps, and, you know, doing that as a layer of the G I S. Well, I have added a lot of work to that position because I wanted to also support the community and economic development function from a land use and development perspective. So we have a lot of requests going over to that G I S person now, over the last several years, that did never used to go. And as soon as that person leaves, because the situation has worked for everybody, but just primarily because it worked for two parties, an individual and us. As soon as that person leaves, that position's gonna need to become full-time. Because we're not gonna be able to get the same caliber of person at the same rate of pay that we are, it's just not gonna work. So, that G I S position is gonna be turning into a, and that person will be retiring soon, there's already talk about it.
Oh, okay.
That position will become a full-time position. Now we have the benefit expense. And we're, you know, the, the rate of pay is probably gonna go up three times to be able to competitively recruit somebody that can do that job. And we need that job done. We've just been real lucky over a long number of years to almost have the service for nothing.
Trustee Cody, I appreciate you bringing that up. That is, that's huge. Our labor force has to be happy. We have to take care of our labor force. I, I'm strongly with that, and I appreciate, that's, that's another whole new point in this conversation. Where we, now we throw labor in there, or potential labor with the G I S. Now, ARPA funds can be spot for that?
But that's only a one-time gift, though, so we have to build that into the budget for long term.
And so to the extent, and this is why, from a traditional public finance policy perspective, I, I know it's not glamorous. But and I know, no matter what some folks may think, one point four million dollars doesn't buy what it used to.
I think we know that by now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't get everything on our list already.
It's not a bad day's work to take seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of free money and replace pump station number one and be done with it. It's, it's, it's not easy to show the constituents and the community, you know.
Right.
It's always, you know, everybody likes the flashier and the, all that jazz, but, you know, core public service goes down to a few things at the end of the day. Roads, safety, health, utilities. You know, the rest is just icing on the cake, whether it's a park or a sidewalk, for that matter.
So, as far as the facilities, I'd like to go, go back to that one more time and say that according to Gordy Fraser, we'll be applying for that, and we'll know if we have a grant by the end of next year. And by the, and we have until, a Google search showed me that we have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to commit funds. And until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six to spend them.
Okay.
Um, but I think we should wait until, I think we should borrow that money. We can pay it right back if we want to with ARPA funds for, for a pump station. But I think we should borrow that at that low interest rate that we can get, that's guaranteed low right now. That's my opinion, and see if we can get grant money. I mean, it'd be hard to argue against, argue to a constituent that we didn't apply for a grant when we had an opportunity also.
And I, we had that discussion, and I think I clarified a little bit of what was said during that meeting, but it doesn't start off as grants.
No.
You don't apply for a grant.
That's right.
You apply for, you make a loan application. And it's closer to when the project's all said and done, and maybe even a bit after that, where the state has visibility, and I don't know how they do it or what the rules are, but they show up one day, maybe because you asked, but what yesterday was a loan that you were paying back every month, every six months in this world. All of a sudden, it's like the student loans. All of a sudden, it's like the student loans that's going on right now, the talk of student loans. People have been borrowing, they've been paying back, and all of a sudden, you know, there's a proposal made to forgive that loan, and it's turned into a grant. That's how this works. So you're not in any way, you don't know to, because a grant's free money. Such as reporting that it's free money, knowing interest.
The conversation you had with Roger, could you get the money for that pump station from him? I mean, is there a possibility of applying to the state for some of that? I, I mean.
But this bucket of money was different than anything that was being talked about by Jennifer.
Okay.
This, however many billions he said it was more, the way he described it to me and the way I internalized it was, he wants a list so that when he's asked how he would like to spend his share through the deal-making, he's got a list of going. Yeah, we could use it for A, B, C, and D, and it can range any, it's not utility-centric or it's anything.
Well, I know, I mean, we'll hear, two weeks from tonight, Sheriff Maine will be here, I'm assuming. He told me that he plans on being here at our next meeting.
Yeah, it is, but uh, in the next couple.
He'll probably talk about the towers that they're getting. That's amazing.
So, you know, Roger shows up and he goes, I want a list because he's going to, you know, the, the where everyone calls it. The state's got a ton of money coming in from the Fed. They've appropriated it to the, to be available to the local units of government. And so they got, it's the state's version of the ARPA money, so they got to get rid of it.
Yeah.
They're turning it back, so.
So I'm assuming that has the same timeline that it has to be used by?
I don't know if it does or not.
Okay. I was gonna say. Walkable bridge on Broadway.
So you'll be setting your list up today?
Non-Michigan taxpayer money that.
Yeah.
So these students that are all getting their student loans forgiven are going to be paying all this peck in years to come?
Okay. Any other? Oh, sorry.
But it is cheap money, no question about it, and the other, from a policy perspective, it makes a lot of sense to borrow money for whether it's a road or a utility sewer line or a pump station. Because that asset lives for 20 or 30 or 50 years. And by borrowing the money, you're creating a situation where the people that are living 50 years from now are helping to pay for that thing that they're using then that we built. So that the current taxpayer isn't putting the entire bill so that my great-great-grandchild can use what I paid for without having to pay for it. That's the concept of it.
Another one I was just thinking of quickly is a conversation I had had with Rodney a couple of years ago. Deals with infrastructure and its roads. I think it's Independence Drive, extending that, where you could utilize the industrial property that we have kind of behind Meyer. To the south or to the northeast of Meyer, there's, I can't remember how many acres are out there, but it's landlocked. There's no way to, to get to it, where if you build the infrastructure to make it where someone could possibly buy some land and put up a building, and that increases your tax base. So those things are jobs, or those things are, they're moneymakers in the future. They're going to cost you, but you have to spend money to make money at times.
When the TIF, the new TIF plan was adopted, those boundaries were expanded in the East EDA to capture some land where, um, you have basically the dirt roads and it's all
Right.
weird up there from a transportation perspective. And the idea is to get those roads, and even if we have to build them with our money,
Yeah.
that they're in a, they're built to the specs of the road commission so that then they can be maybe inclined to then take ownership of them, because they've been built to their specs. They don't have to maybe pay to build them, but right now they're not. And then we got people, we got disputes, so I'm not even beyond them.
Right.
Good thought. Trustee Houck? Any other?
It might be the same area you were talking about.
It is, it's, it's over there.
That's a good one.
Yeah, for sure. That would be a good idea.
Any other discussion points, ideas?
I can put a, a list together that y'all can prioritize, and, you know, based on this and other discussions that we've had and.
Great.
Sounds good.
This is exactly the discussion I was, I couldn't pick a better way to do it. I can just sit down and talk and, uh, don't limit yourself, I mean, you know, now's the time that we, we've got some ti- some time to figure things out. So whatever's there, send our way and, and then together we can collectively come, come up with some really good things.
Well, maybe some member of the public that's listening now has a good idea, and they could get in touch with one of us, and we could relay that to Mark too.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean,
That, yeah.
The thing, one of the things that keeps crossing my mind is, in the 23 budget, you're going to see a couple of things. I'm going to be trying to put some sidewalks in Picker from that neighborhood down to here. And we think we can do that. There used to be, there, there was this narrative where we didn't have any rideaway, but I think that was mistaken. I think that used to be, I'm starting to think now that that used to be in plenty. And so there's actually a state rideaway that's quite a bit bigger.
Ah.
We may not need to mess with any of the, ask anybody for permission.
Gotcha.
Nice sidewalk here, we didn't need money. And then, you know, there's the whole neighborhood, same neighborhood, but, you know, go down a half, quarter mile on Lincoln, and there's a, an old rideaway or something that goes back in there.
Right.
Yeah.
We're, we're creating an environment where we're going to need to have some safe crosswalks on Lincoln for people to get from that neighborhood over to the park.
Yeah. That's nice though.
We're giving them a side, a sidewalk, but how do we get them across the street?
Yes.
Yes.
Fifty mile an hour.
Exactly.
Perfect.
So there are a lot of little things that take a bit of money, but some detail that we need to get in place in the community to help raise up some of the bigger things that we've already put in the ground.
All right, thank you. Good discussion, guys. Moving on, we have extended public comment. This is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. And so with that, there's still nobody here. No one on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom. So I probably don't need to go through the rules of how to get on that, right? Yep, so, so we will open at 8:15. Anybody? And seeing nobody, we will close at 8:15. Moving on, manager comments?
Just two things, let the board know that the restrooms at the parks have been closed for the season. And then, uh, want to thank everybody that, uh, everybody in this room that was out there helping at the cleanup day. Other volunteers that may not be in this room, other staff that may not be here, but it was very well attended. We had about 216 vehicles come through, which is similar to prior year. We, it goes well attended, it's, I think it's a great, continues to be really appreciated by the community. We're already starting the planning for next year. We debriefed today, in fact, and so just thank everybody for helping and, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
How did the shredding part go? Did we actually get, did they give you a quantification on that yet, or?
I haven't seen the quanti- the quantities yet, but we're going to have them back.
Yeah.
What we did see was, a lot of people didn't seem to know about it. It's on the flyer, but that doesn't matter.
Yeah.
A lot of people, it's been going on so long, they just get the flyer, they put it down so they know where it is to use it, but they don't need to look at it anymore. And, but then after year one, we've had shredded, my guess is next year it'll be
I bet you would.
Quite a bit more.
Yeah.
And it was communicated today at the meeting that when people, I forget if it was Tara or Jennifer, but when they would look down at the shredded operation, it wasn't just somebody coming in with a handful of papers, it was
Yeah.
banker boxes that took
Yeah.
two arms to lift, so the people that did know about it had some volume. But there just weren't a lot of people, but my guess is it's that that's going to become more popular.
They tell two friends, and they tell two friends.
Now, um, I know in the past, um, there was discussion about possibly having more than one cleanup day. Is that something that we're still looking into, or do we think we still should only do one?
I don't think we, my, I haven't heard any demand for more than one.
Okay.
Not sure we could pull it off more than once a year.
Okay.
And it was interesting to me, and I don't know the question I asked. For instance, the roll-off, the metal and all that junk. That, that was much less full than it's been in the past. And it might have been.
It's because Sabre and Son, we took everything.
A third of four. And I began to wonder if this hasn't been going on so long now that by having it, we're starting
Not to have so much junk.
People's houses are starting to be cleared out a little bit.
Nice.
So I kind of wonder if that's, which is a, a good thing.
Yes.
You know, if, if, if that's maybe why the roll-off wasn't as full as, because we had the same number of cars.
Well, one thing we didn't have this year, we had no stoves, no refrigerators, no washers, no dryers, no water. We have one water heater. But I think Mike and I were talking, and I'm not sure if maybe you were there when we were talking, or Amy, but now when you go buy appliances, the, usually whoever you buy your appliance from, they'll say, well, what do you want to do with your old ones? And they usually take them now.
Yeah.
Where I don't think that happened three or four years ago. I remember filling one of those ro- I remember stacking washers and dryers on top of each other to get enough room to put them in there. And this year it was like, I never even pulled a muscle because, well, I might have, but.
Yeah, right. I know, it's, it's interesting dynamic. The electronics continues to be amazing.
Yeah.
The volume of that, and the number of those big, I don't know what they are, but they're huge.
Entertainment TVs?
Yeah, you know, with the red and the green and the, I don't know what they are, but, you know, they're as tall as I am. Not just the old tube TV that weighs 500 pounds, but those big wooden-looking things.
Oh my God, the plasma ones?
There's not many of those around anymore.
Holy cow.
We're still getting those. I don't know what, where.
Holy cow. They last a long time.
There were only a couple of this year, weren't there?
Yeah.
But I mean, you remember in the past, correct, they'd fill this room. You know, I mean.
But those TVs cost a lot to run, you know? I can't believe anybody's still running a TV like that.
I don't think they are, that's why they're dropping them off.
Right. I hope so. All right, right. Any further questions for the manager? All right, with that, final board member comments. We'll start over with Trustee Houck.
I really don't have anything, but I just thought of one thing. Um, I know I brought this up before, and I brought it up to the county board, but with all these funds available, some kind of a trash compactor that they could maybe put out at the recycling center, or even if we did one here, I don't know. And that way you eliminate all the couches and chairs you see along the roads. You charge somebody $10 to get rid of it, and they're going to get, I think you'd see a lot less of that on these roads. I mean, it used to go down to, well, down at the end, we've got two dead-end roads that I can, three dead-end roads that I can think of in the township that I think we could clean them up every six months.
Down, down by Renaissance, the one down by.
Yeah.
Yep. But when having a university, uh, here in town, and they go through a lot of furniture, you know, they do, so maybe that might, might contribute to some of that too? I'm not sure. I know they don't ha- all have access to dumpsters.
I, I hope they don't, at the, at CMU, I hope they don't go and just randomly drop them in that dead end, but I, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, kids will do a lot of things.
Well, you know, I don't know, I'd just like to see
Yeah.
something happen with one of those, but I don't know what entity to go to, you know? But you know, you see, you know, you see a lot of chairs along the sides of the road.
Did you talk to the director of the material recycling facility?
I've talked to him. I've talked to county commissioners, so maybe I'll just have to talk to a couple of county commissioners again. Now that these funds are all available, it might be.
Do we know the cost of one of those?
I know, I know McLaren has one because just say if they have a new doctor come in, if they don't like any of the furniture in here, they haul it all there and crush it all up, so.
All right. Clerk Cody, do you have anything tonight?
No.
Trustee Theron?
Um, yeah, I, I actually should have responded to Mark's email. I just kind of had a thought. Working, uh, with the, uh, big trucks dumping garbage, it would be, and I don't know if there's a way to do this or not, but there are some people that just throw every little, little, little pieces of stuff in the trailer.
Oh, yeah.
And it'd be really nice if they would bag the little stuff up, like the big stuff, absolutely not. But tons of little stuff, and just bag it up, because that takes time and potential of poking yourself or something along the line when you reach in and grab. It's not, it's not a huge thing, but it was, it's definitely something. I just, put it, put all the little stuff in bags. I mean, you, you're taking the time to load the trailer, just a little stuff in bags, that way it makes it easier for everybody.
Or boxes.
Or boxes, yeah, absolutely.
There was a guy there, I don't know if he came to your station, he had, like, you know, sheets of paper typed out that said trash, metal, electronics, and he, when he pulled up to ours, I don't know if you were standing there, when he pulled up to our station, I know Mike Lannan and I looked at each other and thought, wow, man, this guy's organized. But he had, he had it all in boxes and everything, and he had just sheets of paper on there.
That's awesome.
Everybody be like that. That would be great.
Organize your tray.
Obsessive compulsive.
You get pretty bad.
Hey, no, no, with that. All right. Trustee Phil?
I neglected to report this in the beginning of the meeting, but I attended a policy governance conference in Grand Rapids at the Amway Grand on Thursday and Friday, where the food was delicious. Anyway, uh, I do, I am planning to, uh, talk to manager stool dryer next week, and maybe even, uh, the supervisor also, if we do get together on that. And then, uh, I'm going to also send you guys all an email about my thoughts on what I learned, and, uh, that, that I will do after I have my meetings. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Trustee Brown?
Yeah, um, first of all, pump truck report. Maybe manager can help me here. 20 days? Sure. Five days? Thank you. All right, I love the help.
I think you know more than, keeping track of that more.
Thank you. Um, and second, I, yeah, I'm, I'm a little excited about that. Um, and second, uh, I, yeah, I'm, I'm a little excited about that, sure, this is your, your two-week report. Um, but, um, more importantly, um, the construction, Brumfield-Lincoln. Lot of neighbors walking down, talking to me, um, and discussing that road. Extremely happy when I mentioned about the six-foot going up the other way. Uh, the addition of, of, of structuring that road better for foot traffic and bike traffic. Every one of them gives, every one of us thumbs up for, for, um, for, for adding that in. Uh, that was, I, I think it's just a big plus. I live in that community, but it's a big plus for that whole community down there. Secondly, uh, very dangerous people coming through, they're driving, bad, bad. Um, I've talked to McGurk's guys, talked to everybody working down there, it's, it's a problem. People are getting tickets, we don't have enough police officers watching that. So, if the community's listening, please, I live right there and I drive around. I do not drive through that construction, and I live in it. I am, I am actually eligible to drive through it, and I will not do that, because I am a construction worker, and that's what we do for a living. These, these people are flying through there, and it's soft sand, so of course they gotta go fast. And when they get into it in a car, it's, it's, uh, when they come out the other end, they've tearing, tearing off their wind, uh, plastic underneath their car, because they come up over the tar bay. Uh, so all kinds of parts laying in my ditch if anybody needs anything. But, uh, no, I just wanna, uh, just, uh, I wanna say it for the guys working down there and everybody passing through, uh, down there, just uh, try, try to stay out of there, let's, let's get it done. They're saying about four weeks, if we just leave them alone, let's get it done, and we can have our road back, so please.
Well, it puts their lives at risk, too.
It puts everybody's, it just, it just takes time pulling people out and everything, it's just dangerous, so, thanks.
Well, and probably destroys some of what they're doing, too.
It does.
Absolutely, it extends, it extends the-
I mean, they're crying out loud.
I was down there this afternoon, taking some pictures, if anybody wants to see it. And I was talking to Mark earlier, there were a couple ladies taking a walk down it, and they said they walked down it every day. They aren't hurting anything. Um, they said they try to walk when nobody's, you know, when the construction's shut down. And some lady comes in from the east, she gets right in the middle of the intersection, I'm standing from me to Mark. She pulls up to me, and she puts her window down, and she says, "How do I get to the bowling alley from here?" She said, "The road's closed." And I said, "Well, you went through the barricade on the east end, why didn't you follow the detour?" You know, and, so then she turned around right in the intersection and went back, and I don't know how she, she didn't get stuck, but
It's a dangerous situation.
There were six cars, I was telling Mark, in the eight minutes I was down there, six cars came through there.
Why isn't it clo- it's not closed off because of the residents, right? Is that what it is?
Residents and businesses.
I don't know how you get around it, it's, they got it pretty wide, I don't know how people are getting around it, but they're going in the ditch and getting around most-
It's plain and simple, it's disrespectful, we just need to stop.
It is, yes, it is.
We just need to stop, so.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, guys. I don't have anything tonight, but I will, uh, accept a motion for adjournment if we got one.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Motion bills, support Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, meeting adjourned at 8:30 PM.